Sorry for the delays, they're coming in like one minute, okay? Anyone else need a call-in information for the initial appearance? Anyone who wasn't here earlier?
Yeah.
Uh, real quick. So, real quick, uh, the initial appearance is supposed to be at 1:30. Your call-in number is 1-646-749-3122. Their access code is 676-705-029.
What was the first number?
The access code is 676-705-029.
Alright, you said 1-646.
The number 646-749-3122. Yes.
Yeah, problem. Good morning. So, uh, we're back. Uh, my name's David DeVillers, I'm the US Attorney with the Southern District of Ohio. I'm with, uh, Chris Hoffman, Special Agent Charged with, uh, the FBI. We're here to announce, uh, an indictment, a six-count indictment charging Alexander Sittenfeld, a Cincinnati, uh, city councilman with, uh, charges relating to bribery, wire fraud, and theft of honest services. The gist of this indictment, and, and I believe it has unsealed at this point, uh, is there was a scheme to deprive citizens, the citizens of Cincinnati by corruptly soliciting $40,000, uh, into a PAC that was secretly controlled by Mr. Sittenfeld in exchange for specific and official action and benefits to Project One. Uh, Project One is the same Project One as was in the previous indictment that we're here a couple of week, weeks ago on. Uh, Mr. Anduque, uh, is, is confidential witness one in that indictment as well as the previous indictment. We have, uh, some of the same confidential or undercover FBI agents that were involved in, in both of these events. I believe we have three undercover agents involved in this particular indictment, and I'll let, uh, Chris get into that a little bit. How this started is, is Mr. Anduque was solicited, uh, as alleged in the indictment, and I, you know, I've said this before, and I truly, really mean it, is that these are only allegations. Uh, Mr. Sittenfeld is innocent and presumed innocent until, if and until proven guilty by us. So, these are only allegations within the indictment. I'm gonna stay within the four corners of the indictment, other than, uh, letting you know that Mr. Anduque is, is, uh, is confidential witness one with his, his authority and permission. Um, Mr. Duque was, was solicited in 2018, um, by the defendant. Uh, Mr. Anduque was attempting to get Project One, um, passed some legislation to benefit Project One, passed through the, the, um, city council unsuccessfully, um, and he got a call from, from the defendant seeking, um, contributions, uh, to, to his, uh, political funds and/or to a, a PAC. Eventually, he met with these, uh, introduction with these, these undercover FBI agents, and he personally accepted 10 checks purported to be su- a, uh, support, um, and, uh, a payment into a, a secret, uh, fund, this PAC that was secretly controlled by the defendant. Uh, he performed official actions in return for those, uh, those, those, those checks, um, promising to deliver votes in the city council, promising to pursue official action, uh, in advance, to advance the, the Project One, and to pressure other public officials to, uh, commit official actions to benefit Project One. Uh, this initially started in 2018, uh, with a, a vote, um, in return for, for these, these checks, a vote, uh, to, um, to help to pass legislation so that Project One could be developed, uh, including, uh, passing legislation that would eventually allow transfer that, that project from the city of Cincinnati to, to the Port Authority. 2019, um, it, there was another scheme, orifice to defraud relating to, uh, a projected sports gambling statewide initiative and the possibility of that. And in that particular scheme, orifice to defraud, uh, Mr. Sittenfeld, um, indicated he could use zoning codes in Cincinnati to create a, a, a controlled environment so that Project One could, uh, have sports gambling to the exclusion of others. So, in, in the gist of, of what we're, we're alleging here is that he defrauded the citizens of Cincinnati with honest services, and, and we're no longer really working for the citizens of Cincinnati, we're working for this, this group. Unfortunately for Ms., Mr. Sittenfeld, when he first began to solicit Mr. Andique, Duque, uh, in 2018, Mr. Duque was always on, already on Team America. Other than Mr. Duque, other than Project One, we know of no relationship or conversations between Mr. Pastor and Mr. Sittenfeld in relation to, to, to Project One. The, the other part of the scheme was to hide the proceeds, to hide the income coming in to go to the benefit of Mr. Sittenfeld via his, his political career, and, um, that scheme involved a number of, of checks. As you're, as you're aware, uh, I believe in 2018, the, the law changed here in Cincinnati, where the maximum any one person could give either by an LLC or in person to any given campaign is $1,100. This was happening around that period. Mr. Sittenfeld tried to get this money before that passed, but because it didn't, he suggested two different things, uh, and the purposes of those two different things were hide the fact that he was getting this money into his slush fund, and two, hide that the payees, that is, the bribees or bribers, uh, if you will, were involved in it. And the way he, he, he did this, um, was to have checks of $5,000 was the max, and go to a PAC, written to this PAC that he indicated to the undercover officers, undercover FBI agents, could not be traced back to him. He also told them to use different LLCs in different names to be placed into that PAC, not so the money couldn't be traced back to them. There were 10 checks altogether, um, handed personally to Mr. Sittenfeld. The first two checks, uh, were, were ripped up because they weren't within the scheme that he was, he was purporting to, to, to have the FBI undercover FBI agents do. 12, 17, 2018, four checks, $5,000 each with different payees were handed at the same time to Mr. Sittenfeld, an amount of $20,000. On September 24th, 2019, two checks, two different payees, of $5,000 totaling $10,000 were handed to Mr. Sittenfeld. And then finally, on October 29th, 2019, again, two checks, two different payees, a amounting to $10,000 were handed to Mr. Sittenfeld. Um, you have the indictment before you. I realize this is the third, uh, city council person that, that's been, uh, indicted by us, uh, this year. Again, we don't see a relationship between Mr. Pastor and Mr. Sittenfeld, other than they were, they were drinking from the same cup, if you will. Uh, the reason, again, is the reason why we had two separate, uh, days for these indictments were simply, that's more of a COVID and grand jury-related issue. Uh, we are limiting the amount of time we are bringing in our grand jurors here in, in Cincinnati because, uh, because of COVID, so we're trying to limit that to two times a month, so every two weeks as opposed to four, and that's also pursuant to, to court order. These are, uh, time, um, it'd take quite a while to present to a grand jury in any given day, and we have other cases, including violent crime cases and narcotics cases that we have to present in order to keep people, violent people detained. So, we couldn't do them both in one day. So, the plan was to try to do them both in one day, we were unable, so we did Mr. Pastor two weeks ago and Mr. Sittenfeld, um, yesterday. And, uh, with that, I'll, I'll step aside and let, uh, Special Agent Charge Hoffman make some statements, then we'll, we'll take some questions.
Thank you, David. To the citizens of Cincinnati, members of the press corps, good morning, welcome back. Uh, I've heard some of your peers in the press corps say this morning, it's like deja vu all over again. There's another saying I'd like to share with you, you can't fight City Hall. Well, apparently you can, when you have concerned citizens and people willing to have courage to come forward and help the FBI and US Attorney's Office, you can fight corruption at City Hall. It is with mixed feelings, and I, I'm here with you because I'm, I'm really so proud of our public corruption program, uh, our squad here, our squad up in Columbus have done incredible work this year, but it is bittersweet, right? Uh, that we have a problem that needs to be addressed by, by two full squads of FBI agents and task force officers. Public corruption, I've said before, is our top criminal priority in the FBI, that's across all field offices. That's because we're uniquely positioned to investigate these very difficult, complicated cases, but it's also because it undermines the trust and confidence in our system of government. The citizens of Cincinnati have to be wondering right now, how can that trust be restored when one-third of city council has been arrested this year for bribery and extortion, uh, honest services cases? According to the indictment, unsealed today, as Mr. DeVillers announced, Mr. Sittenfeld allegedly corruptly received $40,000 in return for providing specific official actions for a development project. He asked that the money go to a political action committee, a PAC that he controlled, and that type of action is against federal law. It's similar to what Mr. Householder was doing, uh, up in Columbus with his PAC. He was funding the war chest for later political endeavors. He was trying to hide what the, where the source of that money was coming from and what the, the activity was, but at the FBI, we're here to shine the light on those corrupt activities. With three members of council charged in the same year, you've got to be asking the same questions that city council, uh, or the citizens of Cincinnati are asking, is this an indication of a deeper problem? I think it is. Uh, as Mr. DeVillers says, they're drinking from the same cup, this, this culture of corruption. If you look at the top 25 cities in America to live in, you know, look at US News and World Report, Curbed.com, MarketWatch.com, uh, Niche.com, there's lots of, of groups out there that are doing top 25 places to live. Cincinnati is not in that top 25 of any survey I could find, but it should be, right? We have so much to offer in Cincinnati, it should be. Booker T. Washington said that there's two ways to exert power, you can push down or you can pull up. These three city council members, including Mr. Sittenfeld, have been pushing down on honest services, they've been, they've been pushing down on the, the people of Cincinnati and standing on their backs and lining their pockets, instead of pulling Cincinnati up and making them a top 25 city in the United States to live. I think Cincinnati's got incredible potential, it's an incredible place to live, and we need honest politicians governing our cities. The people of Cincinnati deserve that. So, thank you for being here, we're gonna open it up for questions.
How persistent was PG through all of this? And if, if there are points that you have where there is a specific example of quid pro quo?
I think the persistence is, he met in secret on numerous occasions alone, received the checks personally to his hand, incidentally middle man, I think, that's where, and the whole, the whole scheme started with him soliciting, "Do you need help from me?" to Mr. Anduque, to the confidential witness. Um, I think that shows, that shows persistence. Um, I think the fact that the project, in my opinion, that the project is off the ground shows that, um, Mr. Sittenfeld tried to deliver on his promise to influence City Hall, you know, for these, these contributions to his PAC.
Is there any other city councilman that's involved in this case?
Well, uh, Mr. Pastor met with the same undercovers and, and the same confidential witness. There's no, no, we were only talking about, there's been three people arrested, and those are the only three that, that we're discussing, yeah, there's no others.
Is there a future target that you are having in mind, or is this it?
So, I have two squads of public corruption agents, and we're standing watch. Uh, I'm not gonna comment on whether we have other targets, uh, or, or other investigations, um, but they are gainfully employed, and, and they're all across America, actually. I've, I've heard people thinking, you know, this is something that happens in Kiowa and Mahoning County, what's happening here too? Um, and we're gonna be on watch, and we're, we're going to keep our politicians honest. I'm not gonna comment on any other investigations that may be going on, uh, but, uh, I'm not planning to, to transfer them to another squad, uh, to do other work, because they're, they're very busy.
Last week, Dave said that Mr. Anduque was tired of being shaken down. So, had this happened prior to him being enlisted, as you say, on Team America, had PG and Anduque had prior dealings with the LLCs and contributions?
Okay, say the last part again.
Had Anduque and PG had prior conversations prior to Anduque being on Team America, had they had prior dealings, you said he was tired of being shaken down.
He, he was, not just by Mr. Sittenfeld. I think overall, he and a lot of the, uh, developers are tired of being shaken down. Um, but in, in any event, he was already on Team America, uh, he was already cooperating with us when he got the call from Mr. Sittenfeld.
But, had they had prior dealings about this?
No, not about, not about this specifically that I'm aware of.
Other projects?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. And you said tired of being shaken down, so how many council members did those two undercover guys from Nashville or wherever they were allegedly supposedly from, how many council members did they meet with, are you able to answer that question?
I am, but I'm not going to. Uh, you know, we, we can't at this point, and we're gonna stick to, to this, to this indictment, and, and I will say that this, just like Mr. Pastor, this kind of, this cube, you will, of evidence is, is done in regards to Mr. Sittenfeld and this, this event. So, there, we don't intend, at least at this point, to charge anyone else involved in this chain of events that are alleged in the indictment.
Can you help me explain how this crosses the line?
Sorry, go ahead, yeah.
I'm sorry, but just the time of his arrest, where he was arrested, and anything else you can share about?
He was arrested at his house, at about 9:30, 9:45 this morning. He, we're not seeking detention on him. I'm sorry, you were next, I apologize.
Just help me explain a little better how this, when this crosses the line, you know, you hear politicians accepting money from lobbyists all the time to get certain things, so how do I explain to people that this crosses the line?
So, we look at, I know, I spent a number of years at Department of Justice over in ex-Soviet Union, I lived in the Republic of Georgia, and I worked in Ukraine, and then East Romania and Bulgaria, and, and the whole time was working on public corruption cases, helping, assisting them. And the one thing these prosecutors and young prosecutors are always kind of looking in vain for over and over again was this "gotcha" moment, you know, where someone says, "I'm a parliamentarian, you give me a million dollars and I'll pass this piece of legislation for you." That's a quid pro quo. Uh, you're not gonna get that, I mean, you're rarely gonna get that, you know? Ms. Denard, yeah, thank you, but, but the vast majority of times, these politicians are clever and smart. And so, they'll use self-serving statements saying, saying, "I don't wanna do anything illegal, but, um, I tell you what, if I'm inclined to vote for this particular piece of legislation," um, and I'm talking just hypothetically, not specifically about this case, "I'm inclined to vote for this particular piece of legislation, you should be inclined to, to support me financially in, in that regard, because it will benefit you." Alright, so you look at that in and of itself, we don't have to prove, by the way, a expressed quid pro quo, quote, and, and we're alleging that there's a quid pro quo in this case, don't, don't get me wrong, but we have to, what we have to prove is even implicit agreement. And, and what you have is you have to gotta look at a lot of different things, once you get that statement, right? In and of itself, that may or may not be enough, but then you gotta look at, alright, what else is going on here? Are they trying to hide the proceeds of, of how this money's coming in? Are they, um, ripping off the citizens of Cincinnati by exclusively trying to do, or anywhere else hypothetically, uh, uh, something for one person as opposed to other people, other citizens? Are they actually physically getting this money themselves in a check to put in their accounts? Are they hiding, is it a, is it a slush fund, or is it going directly into a campaign? So, you look at all these circumstances surrounding these events to, to let you know what's going to, what's gonna happen.
Sir, so can you kind of, uh, in terms of the three indictments that have come down in the last year, is this the worst?
Well, we're not alleging that, unlike the first two, we're not alleging that the, the money went into Mr. Sittenfeld's pocket, if you will, in his personal bank account. This went into a political slush fund, a, a PAC.
Do you believe that there was cooperation between these three defendants, even though you have really connected them to each other, and they?
We do not.
Do they teach each other these things? Do they share, hey, this is how I do it, this is how, and I realize that's not necessarily criminal, but that goes to the culture that we're talking about having to change here.
Well, it actually would be criminal, I mean, that would be corruption, that would be conspiracy, this is how you do things, teaching, aiding and abetting somebody to be corrupt would be, would be a crime, but, uh, but we don't have that. Clearly, if there's this many people in this, you know, this, this controlled environment that we have, uh, that are doing it, statistically, mathematically, you would think that, that something like that goes on, but we don't have any direct evidence to support that.
Can you confirm the name of the PAC and what the PAC is set up specifically for its purpose?
I cannot.
But it was not connected to his name, even though he had?
It was not connected to his name, and you'll see in the indictment, he, he, as alleged in the indictment, the statements that he makes, the purpose of this PAC was to be isolated from him. And he's, to have a PAC, you have to, you have to register with the F E C, the, you know, the Federal, um, Election Committee, and you can't, um, you can have your, your campaign fund, but without a PAC, you can't directly be involved in that PAC, it can't be, you can't directly control it, none of these things, and, and according to his statements within the indictment allegations, that's exactly what he was doing.
Why are we seeing so much of this? It seems like just in the past couple of years, the amount of this is, is just skyrocketed, and what needs to change, I mean, to, to prevent this from happening?
What we're doing, um, you know, sending people to prison, you know, that, that's the deterrent that, that does it. And I, and I said this before, and I, and I mean it, I really, I'm really concerned about young politicians or individuals that haven't gotten into this not knowing any better, you know, they, they wanna do the right thing, but, you know, in order for them to survive, they've gotta do whatever else is doing, that sort of culture, that's what we're talking about, and that's what we wanna end, and that's what we wanna, that's why we're doing these things, that's why we're talking to you, that's why we're asking people to come, talk to us, and, and, and let us know whistleblowers and individuals that seem to be being shaken down, even if they, and that's just not, not only elected officials, it's, it's public service, and that's what we're trying to do.
What kind of education is given to elected officials on this level? I know that when judges get their decisions, they are indoctrinated into, you know, the whole culture of a higher level, but when you're talking about city government like this, is there any sort of education program, a list of ethics, is there a training program? this, is there any sort of education program, a list of ethics, is there a training program? Is this is good, don't do this, or this is good, or is that expected to just be something that you teach yourself?
I would hope that people would just know you shouldn't take money in return for favors to people, but, um, I, I see what you're saying, with, so, within law, there's, you know, ethic can, ethical canons and stuff that would cover all of this, conflicts of interest and things like that, but, yeah, I, I think you're, I don't know the answer to that, but I think you're right, if somebody who has not studied law or ethics comes into this, I think that would be very, very helpful, and, and we truly do want to kind of warn would-be politicians, you know, the people that wanna do good, like, you, not only, you don't have to do these sort of things, you, it's illegal to do these sort of things.
Well, I mean, it sounds like that household case, and I'm, I'm wondering if you think that there's such widespread corruption problem that these politicians may be learning from each other about this, maybe communicating, you know, how, sorry?
I, I think that's a fair inference, I mean, I, I don't know that, that we have direct evidence, at least as a widespread, you know, like there's some clubhouse for corrupt politicians that get together and, and learn these things, but, um, you know, clearly, I think this, as we said, it appears to be a culture of this.
There was another public official paying, there's an indictment, public official paying, are people involved in that?
No, no.
And Denard, did she cooperate in the order to arrest PG?
We don't, we don't discuss cooperations, but I believe Ms. Denard's plea agreement is, 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 um, unsealed, and you can read through that to see if, if that's the case.
When would we be, if Mr. Duque hadn't come forward, would we be here today? Would this be months out, kind of where, where would we be in order for his help?
Yeah, I don't know if we would be here today, you know, I, I-
So, does that make you worry, though, that without the, of the help, this will go unchecked?
Absolutely, heck yes, and, and that's what, what Special Agent Hoffman was saying last time, we, we need people to, to come forward, we need people to do this, we're not gonna, you know, we don't have FBI agents just kind of walking around undercover FBI agents, I, I, it's not like the movies, you know, so, we, we need people to come forward and give us this information, give us this intelligence so we can act upon it. And that's what Mr. Indukway did.
You said you're not seeking, um-
Detention? We're not seeking detention, that, that's not to say we're not seeking, eventually, if in fact we do get, again, he's presumed innocent, if we do in fact get a conviction, we'll be seeking a guideline sentence.
I have one more question. How long had the Duque been cooperating with this prior to first meeting?
Uh, not long, I think a couple of months, it was 2018, so it, that wasn't that long. Okay. Thank you.